Agents, through the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Price Gray.
Here.
Mr. Vickers.
Here.
Mr. Dolph Meyer.
Here.
Mr. Shirey.
Here.
Mr. Lancaster.
Here.
Mr. Sowers.
Here.
Ms. Pence.
Here.
Mr. Man, do you look like the rest of the maiden jurors COVID-19 budget?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, may I have your license before we start?
Yeah, I hear you.
I'm sorry, what did you say, Leah?
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized, sir?
Yeah, what do you got on your mind?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we amend the agenda. I'd like to add the item of the senior banner. Can you turn that please?
Yeah, I got you on there. I got you on there too. Okay.
Do you need a second for that? It's already on.
Now we got it on there.
You already have it on?
I'll get you down the road, we gotta leave.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Okay, Steve, COVID-19 budget.
Well, yes, sir. What was in your packet, uh, VML has worked with the group analytics, Inc., and they've come out with what we feel is probably intended for the larger cities as far as potential impact on, on what COVID will have on, on budgets. We've, we've worked out a possible projection that would indicate that this year, we think that the, the maximum impact would be about $130,000 and then in the upcoming fiscal year, maybe about $180,000 of potential impact. This year, our main impact will be the, the loss of our lodging tax. We're, we're hoping that the sales and meals tax will not see a significant drop. But we're, we do know that there is no lodging tax being generated in, in Page County right now. We know that that'll be the, the major impact to us. So again, that would be potentially $50,000 if the lodging is not opened up before the end of our fiscal year. Staff have taken, undertaken, or we, our departments are minimizing expenses where possible and we're hoping to be able to provide information to y'all when we have a more definitive fiscal impact. But we do think that as far as expenditure reduction, I think we'll be okay and the, any potential loss shouldn't be significant.
This is the question, Steve. I mean, um, so the biggest, the basis for the fact that you guys are projecting a more moderate impact than this study indicated is population? And, um, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, again, what we, I believe what the, the analytics folks did is they looked at primarily the larger communities where a lot of their revenue was based on a Virginia beach or a place that had a lot of revenue from their lodging tax. And as such, that would translate to a more significant impact on their budget. What we did is, again, we, we took a look at, um, let me see if I can go forward. I put that in here. I did not, I apologize. Looking at our historic revenues, lodging within March historically would generate about $12,000, April $20,000, and May $25,000. So therein, you know, we're looking at about a $50,000 loss. If, if it doesn't continue into June, then we're probably going to see another $20,000 reduction. So that, again, that's our biggest potential loss.
Bigger than the meals tax?
Well, again, we're not, our, our meals tax, I think, and I apologize, we haven't really been able to, to look at that. The, the numbers come in typically a month after, so.
So I was just noticing, and thank you so much for providing the current year-to-date numbers. That was very helpful. Looking at lodging and meals, and I guess, Mary, when the current amount of 41,000 on the meals, is that like a monthly, is that a 30-day thing?
Yes, it'd be the year-to-date would be the total for the year. So that's by the month.
That's, that's your TOT, that's your transit occupancy. And your meals, about 41,000 on the current amount. So right now, we're, we're down 175,000 in meals. I mean, we have, I mean, we are 24%. We have a balance of 175,000 due, is that the way, am I reading it correctly? And with the TOT, we're at 70, we have a balance of about 73,000 due, if I'm reading it correctly.
But you, you're correct, uh, our, our projection for the 175, again, we're not, and I'm, I'll have to defer to Mary on this, the $40,000 that we took in for the last month would have been March.
March.
March, so we haven't seen April yet.
Well, and historically, what we realized in March was about 55,000. So there is a, a, a difference of about $13,000 in revenue of this, this current March versus last year's revenue.
And that was basically on a half of impact.
When did the restaurants close? Was it middle of March? The restaurants, when did they actually close? Was it the middle of March?
Yeah.
Friday the 13th was on the beginning of a big downturn for our businesses.
So, Mary, they have it to the end of the month, is it important or?
They have to the 20th.
20th, that's what we did with the lodging tax.
So we'll, we'll go April and May 20?
May 20.
And you receive it only, so you do receive that immediately as soon as it's filed with the state?
No, 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 they pay it directly.
Okay, I guess, yes.
So Steve, these analytics folks, did they make any assumptions like when things are going to return to normal? Or they just, you know?
No.
I think your all's projections are much closer to theirs.
Well, and again, I, their study was basically just looking at every government lumped together in, in the Commonwealth with just, and then generalizing potential impact. So it's, it was a guide, and, and again, I think ours are a little more specific to Lorre. We definitely will see less revenue, but I don't think it's near the impact of, of other localities.
What, what about some of the, um, some of the state money, like the VDOT money? I know there's some big numbers hanging out there yet on the bridge. And will we get that by the, by June 30?
Well, I think Brian's been talking with VDOT and the, the maintenance money for this year, we think will continue to, to come in as normal. I think the only thing that we're, we've been made aware of is that the funding that we had applied for, for state of good repair for our roads, that will probably be delayed. But it's our understanding that their normal maintenance payments will continue unaffected.
Yeah, I personally think that we're not predicting a full impact on the TIP at most parts due to the nature of our, with the natural parks being closed and working hours being closed. And, you know, we're not, you know, based on a particular department. And, you know, whether groups of 10 or more be allowed is a big question. And that plays into, you know, the impact of sort of our, the tourist economy here. So, um, you know, what's our, you know, what's the plan, Steve, for if these numbers are significantly lower than we think they're going to be?
Well, again, in the current fiscal year, we have reduced our expenditures as, where possible. And for the upcoming year, what we, we provided was a list of the, down at the, the bottom of, of this slide, there are some capital acquisitions that we believe we will not pursue until we have realized what the, the true impact of COVID has been on our, our revenues. And again, just based on where we think will be, you know, we, we have the potential to, to minimize capital expenses by a quarter of a million dollars. And we, again, we hope that, that will be a realistic number. But until we know when everything opens up, uh, that's where we're at.
Steve, while we're on this subject, is it okay now to ask Jason his opinion on, uh? Uh, Jason, this is Jerry. Does the county have the authority to close down our lodging in the town?
That was something that I looked at in response to an email from Steve. And basically, unless you're a town that has population greater than 5,000 residents and you also elected to come up with your own emergency plan, then you fall under the county's authority. Uh, and that's, that's the case here.
We're close on it.
We're close.
But they, but we have, we don't have an independent emergency plan.
We do.
We do have an independent, okay, so then.
So we just need to move in another 100, 200 people.
In groups of 10 or less.
Jason, we'll move a little bit, we're coming up. Thank you, Jason.
Now, Steve, this packet was wonderful, thank you. A lot of good information in there.
Uh, the only other item that we had, uh, there was a request from the Little League due to the fact that the, the ballfields had not been able to open. They had requested council consider relief on their first quarter payment for their concession agreement.
500.
Yes. And if, if council is agreeable, we'll include this on your, your May agenda for, to approve it. Well, hopefully a happier subject. You know, we've, we've provided the opportunity for council to provide any comments or, or feedback that y'all might have about the proposed FY21 budget. We have advertised, or in the process of advertising for the, the public hearing to occur at your May meeting. Again, unless things change, it will be a, a remote meeting such as we're having tonight. The advertisement includes means of the public providing comments in advance of the meeting to staff. If we, when we receive any comments, we would then read them on their behalf at your public hearing.
Just, um, just some general comments. With the revenue projections, I mean, we're pretty much just shooting in the dark on this for the upcoming budget. Because we don't, we don't really know how drastically it's going to impact our revenues on the, particularly on general funds. And I'm thinking that probably if we plan, I mean, obviously we have to pass the budget for fiscal year, but plan to saying that, uh, you know, we, we need to probably anticipate that we're going to be doing some budget amendments mid-FY21, uh, by the way. You know, if it's better, we think, or if it's less, or if it's worse than. But some, some of the revenue projections, because we are being aggressive with them, I think, uh, in terms of what we're projecting. So I think that we need to keep that in mind when, when we're going into this thing. And the other question I had, on the, on the transfer out of reserves, $775,000, is that, is that to cover the, um, is that to cover some of the budgetary increases plus some of the capital programs? Or what exactly is that going to cover? Which page are you looking at? Your Page 2, 3, and your, uh, general fund reserve, I mean, revenues, excuse me. Oh, I'm sorry, that's a decrease, I'm sorry, I'm reading that wrong.
Oh, yes, sir. We had.
Yeah, I'm reading that wrong.
That's good news.
This year's budget was based solely on revenues.
This current year, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Scratch that, everyone. That's all I had. And the other, the other thing I was, you know, we'd mentioned, you'd mentioned in your cover letter about, uh, doing something for the employees. Is that something you think we're going to be able to do in terms of?
Well, again, recognizing the questionability of, of where revenues are coming from, even before we were able, before COVID came along, um, the, the revenues that we had versus the expenses, the expenditures, we simply weren't, I, I wasn't comfortable proposing any sort of COLA or, or merit increase. Now, council can consider possibly doing a, a one-time bonus in lieu of that for staff that can either come from fund balance or some other, um, revenue line item. But recognizing where we're at as far as revenue projections and, and if, if council were to consider some form of recognition for staff, I, I would say a one-time bonus from fund reserve would probably be the, the best option that y'all would have.
I think that, I mean, I think we should consider doing something for the employees. I mean, I know it's, um, it's, I know it's, with the revenue projections and some of the expenditures are, right now, it's a little tough to decide. We just, if we could do a bonus, it would be, it would reduce the impact on the benefits associated with it. And then maybe reexamine it again in mid-year for, for something additional. I mean, I think our employees have worked diligently through this whole thing and have provided some very essential services to the town while this is going on and continue to do so. And so I've always said our employees are our biggest asset. And anything we can do for them, I'd like, I'd like to see us do, if we can.
I agree with Jerry, I think we need to do something for them. They've been, most of them have been out on the, supposedly the front lines. But they've been making it with the public during this whole thing. Government work, parks and rent, police, they've been out there. A lot of governments, uh, better people work from home, or not even working on, not even working at all. So I think we do need to do something, it's just a slap in the face to me, we don't do something.
Yes, agree.
We look at doing something like a bonus, look at the second quarter and go, man.
Yes, sir, and if it did come from.
I think you better wait.
Yeah.
And, and again, if it's, if it's funding that's pulled from reserves, it does not have to be included in consideration of the budget. That can happen at any time the council feels comfortable with where the, the economy is going.
I think that's a good route.
Yeah.
Yes, I like that.
So we'll consider second half of the budget or second quarter, or maybe second?
Well, I, what, what, I think with Mary and Danielle, we're, we're monitoring the revenues coming in. And when we start to see some form of, um, a more stable revenues coming in once the, uh, the businesses have started to, to open up, we can let y'all know when we think we're in a, in a better position for y'all to consider some, some recognition of, of staff.
Are we able to get a further contingency plan beyond the, the capital projects delays that you've outlined? Are there other contingencies if the VML projections are closer to the truth? Or if somewhere on that continuum, explore that direction?
Well, some things that weren't included in that, um, as if events are not permitted, you know, having, having, the, the Fourth of July event. Right now, we have, um, we have committed to doing the fireworks. If group assemblies are not opened up in, in Virginia by that time, we won't, we won't have the, the event. And that, that, there's, there's cost savings there. It's kind of hard to quantify because it's mainly overtime. But I, the, the longer that impact occurs, there are some savings that we, we incur. But we would rather get to the point that we can start having normal events. Part of what we've been talking with the Meredith at Lorre Downtown is, you know, hopefully we'll get back to the point that, uh, events can occur so that we could consider the, the food truck event, the, the get-down in, in downtown event to be our, you know, our grand opening, or grand reopening, if you will, of Lorre. We hope that that will happen. If not, then maybe we would look at, you know, the Fourth of July. And if not, then we'll look at whatever that next event is. But I, I do think that we do want to have some form of, you know, some, give, give people the opportunity to, to have an event, you know, whether we, whether they have to have masks, we'll have to have some kind of separation and, and whatnot. But it would be good for us to, to do that. The food truck event would make sense because the way that we had planned it, we were going to be shutting down Main Street from the fire department on down to Hawksville. That would give us the opportunity to have a, a widespread out event so that people aren't gathering, uh, in one area for, for prolonged times. We'd be able to have tape on the ground in front of the trucks that says, basically, you know, maintain your, your six-foot. So every, if, if everything goes well, we're, we're hoping that that would be our event to, to, I have the grand reopening, if you will. So we're, we're trying to put that into effect. So getting back to your original question, um, there are some costs that are saved that when, when events don't occur. And again, we're trying to minimize other things, overtime and whatnot. But, um, but it's harder to, to control those because, you know, water breaks with our, our, our water sewer crews and, and things of that nature. It just, you know, our, our water plant, we've had a couple of unexpected repairs. So it, the capital items, we, we definitely know we have exact control of not purchasing them and that cuts back on our expenditures.
I'd like to see some further contingency if we can get that, just to see what that would look like from, from our perspective. I really hope that your projections are correct, but.
Steve, I'm trying to get a handle on what the current state is right now. Or are we having a problem with people paying the water bill? Or is that still coming in? Or do we, are we cutting people off or not? I mean, I'm thinking or not?
We're not cutting off. But people, I mean, we do have people that will call and say, I cannot pay until the second week of May. Fans aren't sure paying. But really, they've been paying.
Okay, so so far it's not been a major change?
No.
Been here.
And I had a question, the one that she'd, so real property, they show a 5% drop, leaving for this, this coming year. What, what was, what made the rationale for that? Is that more like arrears or what is?
Well, I think it's a combination of, of folks either not being able to pay. I think that's primarily the, the thought.
For the curb, especially, right?
Yeah. And then there's also the potential for houses going, uh, being foreclosed upon. Again, the, the tax would then fall to whomever would become the, the, the bank effectively, but.
And that would still be an asset, so I guess under municipal accounting, that would still not count as revenue until realized, arrears, right? So that would.
Yeah, until, until it's actually realized, from a budget standpoint.
Our, our next item, uh, Jason's been, as, as always, following the, uh, change in rules that have come out of, of Richmond. And there has been some adjustments to procurement regulations as well as the, the limits on that. What we've, what he's drafted is a code amendment that includes some of the changes in there. There's a couple of options as well as whether or not the town would want to go up to the, the new limits established by, uh, by the Commonwealth or maintain where we're at. And where there are options like that, he's included, you know, what the new upward limit is versus where we're at now. So effectively.
My apologies, it's hard when I don't have video to, to see you all. It's hard for me to know when you're transitioning, ending one thing and starting another until you talk. But I wanted to know if we could go back to that COVID budget impact for a second before we move on to procurement.
Certainly.
And that is, I, I sent an email about the possibility of looking at using TOT and meals tax, collecting it from taxpayers into a separate account and then allowing those contributors to withdraw those funds in order to use them to re, sort of reinvest in their own businesses. One of my concerns is, we know that the stimulus care package that's been put into place has not helped the majority of the local businesses in our NACOM district. The short-term impact is that, yes, of course, our meals and our TOT taxes will be reduced because those businesses have suffered in the short term. My fear is that if they are not, um, helped, then we will see long-term effects of this. And, you know, that, that almost million dollars of a revenue stream that we get from TOTS and meals tax is certainly an important part of our budget. And having a thriving downtown community will make the benefits us all. I know a year or two ago, you know, Brian had presented some ideas from HopeWell where they were doing the same thing, collecting those and allowing businesses to withdraw them to reinvest back into their own businesses. You know, I was wondering what towns, the council's thought was on help, trying to help the businesses with meals tax and TOT tax, allowing them to collect it and then rein, reinvest in their businesses.
Wasn't that a real estate tax, the first? Not, not meals tax, correct? Okay.
Is that even legal? Your tax factor of certain kinds?
Uh, you're breaking up.
Go ahead.
I'm, I'm not so sure we have, do we have the authority, uh, do we have the enabling authority to, to do that?
I think Jason, Jason had confirmed that he would take specific action by council. Were you effectively, I'll defer Jason's, Jason can speak to it more than I can.
Uh, yeah, you would need to establish a tourism zone and then businesses within that zone could apply for benefits set by council. And those could include a variety of tax rebates that can include the business license packs, meals packs, and, and those sorts of items. And establishing a tourism zone, once this type of revenue is collected, it becomes general revenue for the town and then you're really limited on how you can appropriate that to a private entity. And that essentially would have to be a charitable organization benefiting residents of the town. Or you could transfer it to your IDA to be administered pursuant to guidelines the IDA would decide on.
Is that a date of good folks on Madison?
Who told Madison was, uh, I think it was a public-private partnership where it wasn't benefits administered as part of the tourism zone. I think it was more particular to just that type of a, a range, city arrangement between the city and the developer and the foundation.
So I'd really like to see, it sounds like, you know, this is a few times that Tourism Zone has come up with the board, you know, I'd really like us to, to look into that. I do think that this would be, you know, a great thing to, you know, to be able to put some of these funds back into those. put some of these funds back into those businesses in order to help them get through, you know, this time period, that way they're there for the long time, you know, for the long term.
Let's, let's just take it under advisement and operate over there. I mean, it's hard to give money away that you haven't collected.
I'm not asking for money that we haven't collected, I would be asking that we give back part of that Mills tax and give back part of that TOT tax that was collected, that is being collected.
I think we ought to take a wait-and-see approach on that.
Sounds like it'd be a lot tougher if you just reduced the amount of tax we charged to begin with, but I'm not sure I want to do that.
No, then if you don't collect it, you, it does, it's not realized, it's threatening anywhere, right, so if you just reduce the tax, the person that will be saving will be people that were buying through the rest of us.
Just pass it under consumer, yeah. I think, I think we have to be, and these are our mutual times, and, I mean, the amount of Mills tax and TOT money that we collect, if we were to reimburse it to the businesses, and I, I don't know that it's going to, and what the town collects overall, and, and the, and the growth is, is significant, but we start giving a portion of it back to the businesses, I don't know how much that's going to constitute for, and the other thing is that, before we start taking away our revenue streams, I think we need to understand that through all of this, the town, the businesses, and our residents are going to expect the same level of services that they have received in the past years and, and will continue to receive, so we don't have a lot of options in terms of generating revenue, especially if some of these revenues begin to decline, so I think that we have to be careful in jumping out there too quickly and, and agreeing to start reimbursing revenues and, and taxes that we're receiving. Again, we'll know a lot better after we get into the next fiscal year, but right now, it's, it's questionable, in my mind, to, to consider that, because we do have to operate, I mean, that's, that's a lot.
Right, I think, you do, I guess, I'm just thinking about, you know, the long term, you know, in five years from now, four years from now, three years from now, two years from now, a year from now, these businesses aren't in business, you know, that's much more detrimental to the talent, so it's...
No, I, I agree, I understand where you're coming from, and I agree with that, but I don't know that what we would be able to reimburse an independent, an individual business from the taxes that they're paying is gonna, is, is gonna necessarily prevent that, that's, that's all I'm saying. I mean, the gesture is nice, and it's nice to consider that, but at the same time, these same businesses are, are going to expect a level of service from us, and, and we have to, we have to fund that somehow. That's just my, you know, I'm, I mean, I'm willing to consider anything, but at this juncture going into, we're not so sure even where any of our revenues are going to be. If the state, if the state takes a bigger hit than they're anticipating, you can count on some of those revenues diminishing as well, they haven't said that yet, but it's gonna happen, I'm sure, and then also with some of the other side of it, with the utilities, so not that those two funds are mixed, but I, I still think that we have to be careful in, in starting to give away any, any of our revenues until we know where we're going to be in the next fiscal year.
Well, if we get in a situation of giving away, what, three or 400,000, I'm just throwing out a figure, that's gonna lead, have to have a significant tax increase to cover that, that's...
Well, it's gonna, it's gonna, that's gonna be made up.
Or as you say, cut back services.
Yeah, or either cut back services or you increase, you increase the taxes somewhere else, because if you start reimbursing the taxes to the, to the businesses, then what do you do, you up the real estate property taxes on the residents and make up that difference, or you cut, cut service, so, I mean, the thing with local government is, you know, you can't raise revenues by holding bake sales, so you have to, you know, the revenues have to come from somewhere, so...
Car washing.
Yeah, or car washing, we wouldn't want to do that. But I, I just think that these are, like, right now, as we're going into this budget, I think we have to be extremely cautious on, on, on the revenue side. And we are dealing with tax paid money. Yeah, and, that's, that's a little... All right. Got all your questions answered, Leah?
Yes, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Okay. So we're gonna have to have a code?
Well, again, we wanted, we don't have to advertise for, in May, we can do that in June, just wanted to give you all the, the first flush of what is being proposed and, and see if there's any input from y'all as far as...
I think some of the, I think some limits are high for the town's size, I, I think they need to be brought down. You know, goods and services, $200,000, and some of the street work, $300,000, I mean, I think we need to bid to the same sort, that has to be competitive with a lot lower rate than that for us to be at, to be out of harm's way. So I'd like to see us look at reducing, not necessarily as low as they are up now, but certainly lower than what the states...
Okay, so we can, we can bring you back some, some recommendations as far as the amounts?
Yeah. Imagination station.
Yes, sir, next, next item that we've got is the committee that's been reviewing all of the proposals, has come up with their recommendation for, going the wrong way, I For the proposed imagination station design, the recommended...
I'll take it's in this one, is it Steve, it's in the public project, isn't it?
Basically what, trying to get there, there we go. All Recreation was the recommended provider, their proposal is a $300,000 facility, and it, it is actually a wonderful facility. It includes a three-story slide, it includes, includes, inclusive facilities throughout, there are swings, there are swings that allow parents to swing with their child at the same time and, and looking at each other. It basically hit all of the, the, the items that the committee thought would be a, a good facility to re, reintroduce at the imagination station location. Brian has been talking with Blue Ridge Bank about the financing of it, they, they have indicated that tenure would be possible, we have to roll 150 odd thousand dollars for what we owe, that's still the remaining balloon on the Dean field improvements that we'd be rolling into this, and so we do feel comfortable, and it was included in the budget, the, the funding for this next year. The, the funding that we had included in the budget was a seven-year, if we go to a ten-year, that will realize a, a minor reduction in, in the annual cost of about $20,000 to the better. Yes, sir.
Looks great, and I know our family would love it, but I, I, we're in some pretty uncertain times at the moment, so...
Yeah, I, I agree, and I, you know, I, I think it's a great plan, and certainly appreciate the work the committee did to put it together, it's gonna come in, but I really think we need to look at it later on in the next budget year, see where we are.
I would see why we can't go over there and do some maintenance on the one we've got, since we restore houses that are 200 or 300 years old, we ought to be able to restore, ought to be able to restore a park.
Most definitely, we can, we can, we can defer this for a year if, if council feels that that's appropriate.
I mean, I know, we don't want it to be anything hazardous there, but, you know, we've gone back and replaced boards, we've replaced swings, we've got rid of splinters and whatever, I think we need to do it again.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I wonder whether they looked around, I think it could easily last another year, there were one or two dangerous spots, which could easily have been fixed.
It needs a little maintenance, I'm really happy.
We'll tend to love it here.
Okay, we can, we'll, we'll notify the providers that we're going to defer for a year and, and go from there.
I mean, this work is not wasted, we can just still go with the same companies, maybe we go out to the same companies next year, and then we give them the issue to do it.
And, and it definitely tells us that if we have a reliable revenue stream, we have the ability to put in a very good-looking facility, as being part of it.
It'd make a good fundraiser for some, some more. Would this company be, would they work with doing it peacefully, or do they want, you know, one big, big...
The, the, the problem with that was that in order for them to provide it, we would have to remove the entire, it, the existing facilities, and so it just made sense that if we're gonna have to remove everything to put in a simple section, to take it out at once and, and then come back and, and put in the new facility all at once.
Is, is Quinlan moving, they have, we have to...
No, the, the, yeah, we were planning to remove the, the existing facility, we were planning to reuse some of the equipment, moving it over to InLawn so that we could expand and, and replace some of the equipment at InLawn, but the, the intent was that we would remove everything, we would give the contractor a clean site, and then they would come in and put in the new facilities.
Did, does this proposal include, and I only ask because I want to do something like this in other jurisdictions, but ADA and, and ability for special needs and that type of thing?
Yes, sir, part of, let me see if I can find it, part of what it includes is, is access up to the, the first levels through ramps, as well as there are areas that have music playing, so that, so, yes, sir, that was one of the, the key components that they, they looked at was accessibility.
And what's on the videos that's coming put out, it's really nice to see a setup where parents are encouraged to be active with the kids, that's what caught my attention the most.
And then, I believe the, the last item that Ms. Pence added was...
Secret flags, Leah, you used yours?
Yes. Steve, I'm sorry, I received two emails, and I forwarded them on to you all, so you have the same information I had, so Steve, can you give us some more fair updates, how, what's going on with the, the banner request?
Well, we've been, I've been talking with a couple of, of parents, and they had originally wanted to put banners in, unfortunately, the number of, of students that they have, we don't have enough holes in, in a good grouping to, to make that happen, plus we just don't have the, the hardware to install the 120, 130. So what we've recommended to them would be to put in ground-mounted signs, basically, our recommendation would be to have it printed on, on effectively the size of a for-sale sign that's got the, the wire that you could stick in the ground. Our hope would be that they would do like a number of other schools where they put it at the school location, I think they did mention that in...